I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council order to give pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk Rolka?
Councilman Gabbell.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Accord, Mr. President.
All right. We will now move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked, maybe responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Was there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Close input on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Some move. Support.
Motion from Councilman McDermott, supported from Councilman Hornbuckle. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Councilman McDermott, or excuse me, Councilman Hersberg, apologies.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to move item E to new business. I want to add some discussion to this item.
There's a motion to move item E to new business.
Support.
Supported from Councilman McDermott. Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, item is moved to new business, back to the consent calendar. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held August 7, 2023. Request from Denise Catallo Lutheran High School, 33300 Cowan Road, to conduct their annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 6, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. They'll start at the back of the high school, proceed south on Farmington, west onto Cowan, then turn right into the high school parking lot, and they have requested police assistance to block traffic during the parade. Approval of request from the Westland Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 1279, to collect funds via a fill-the-boot charity drive for MDA from August 24 through August 26, 2023, at the intersection of Wayne and Ford Roads. Approval of bid for rock salt for snow and ice control. Administration recommended the low bidder, Detroit Salt Company, at a price per ton for the 2023-24 season not to exceed $59. Price per ton for the 2025-24-25 season shall not exceed $60.77 per ton. Purchase of seven picnic tables, including one wheelchair-accessible picnic table for the Jefferson Barnes Community Center. The purchase will be from Kirby Built Sales in an amount not to exceed $8,796.50. Purchase of 29 replacement bullet-resistant vests for the police department. Purchases from On Duty Gear LLC in an amount not to exceed $22,040. Purchase of two Snow Raiders for the Department of Public Service. Purchase from Weingartz, amount not to exceed $24,680. Purchase of a replacement light tower for the Department of Public Service. Purchase from McAllister Family of Companies Incorporated, amount not to exceed $15,400. Purchase of two replacement arrowboards for the Department of Public Service. That purchase is from Poco Sales in an amount not to exceed $10,300. Purchase of replacement hot-patch trailer for the Department of Public Service. Purchase is from Falcon Asphalt Repair Equipment in an amount not to exceed $24,586.92. Purchase of a replacement one-ton dump truck for the Department of Public Service. Purchase from Versalift Midwest in an amount not to exceed $108,928. Purchase of two replacement tandem axle dump trucks for the Department of Public Service. Purchase from Versalift Midwest in the amount not to exceed $443,840. Purchase of a riding sweeper for the Department of Public Service. Purchases from Tenant Company, amount not to exceed $51,573.64. Approval, this is the last item on the consent calendar, approval of hoist repair quote to repair an existing hoist for the Department of Public Service. The quote is from Equipment Distributors, amount not to exceed $18,253.46. Moving to payment of voucher.
Some move. Motion from Councilwoman Sampe.
Support.
Supported from Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
New business, item one, confirmation of reappointment of Ken Sharp to the Westland Planning Commission for a three-year term effective upon council confirmation and to expire August 20, 2026.
Motion from Pro Tem Rakowski, supported from Councilman Gabbell. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. We're asking for an approval of a longtime planning commissioner, who's our chairman as well, Mr. Ken Sharp. This will be a three-year term that will become effective upon council confirmation tonight and will expire on August 20 of 2026. As stated, he is the chairman of the board. He's been on this board for 28 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gabbell.
Thanks. And this is, you know, Ken does a great job and has for a long time on the Planning Commission. I'm just curious when we're going to start seeing some of these other appointments that are open. There's two vacant on the Planning Commission, three vacant on the Parks and Rec Advisory Council, two on the DDA, three on the Tifa Board, and two on the LDFA, all of which require council confirmation, so. And these have been vacant for some period of time, so I'm just curious when we're going to start seeing some of these appointments coming forward.
Mayor?
Happy to answer that. To the chair to Councilman Gabbell and to those in the audience, glad you asked that. We're actually going to be doing what we're going to call a board fair, a board recognition day. We're going to recognize a lot of the boards and commission members in our city and also give residents and members of the community an opportunity to see and feel and touch basically what each board looks like, so they can meet with the liaison from each board, they can meet with the chairperson, other board members as well, and kind of get to know what that board's about, see the demographics of the board, whether it's male or female, race, different geographical areas of the city. That information's on our website, but we want to do it. We want to open up a forum and have all of our board members in and also bring the public in. I'm calling it like a job fair, but it's going to be more like a board fair. We'll have more information real soon on that.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
New business, item one A, approval of bid for street sweeping services for the Department of Public Service. Administration recommends National Industrial Maintenance Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $138,976 per year.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampe. Is there support?
Support.
Supported from Pro Tem Rakowski. Doug, give us some more detail on that.
Yes, ma'am. We are recommending National Industrial Maintenance. They're been our professional service provider for sweeping for the last eight years. They respond quickly to us. I know there's times when they miss a street, nine times out of 10, that's because of the amount of vehicles on there that they won't be able to get to the curb line. So, the other bidder is a out-of-state company. They have no service time in the area. I believe in Michigan, they're located primarily right now in southwest Michigan, so we're concerned about the response time should they be out in St. Joseph or something, and we need service quickly.
Okay. Is there anything from the maker? Councilman Sampe?
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. So, just to clarify, so currently there's two bids, just based on what we are seeing. One is local, one is on the south side of the state. Is that correct, through the chair?
Correct.
Okay. So, just to confirm, if we were to go with the other vendor, or whatever questions that would be brought up about the other vendor, your concern would be response time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Anything from the supporter?
Nothing.
Councilman Hersberg, did you have questions?
Thanks, Council President. Real quick through the chair to Doug Morton, how many passes through each neighborhood are they doing for this price? Are they just doing the whole city once for that price?
Twice.
You talk about calling them out.
Twice.
They do it twice for that price?
Twice. But on occasion, when they miss a street, we will call them back and get a hold of them right away. They'll send a sweeper, sometimes just at the end of the day, through there. If we have a utility repair water main break that we're not able to clean the area quickly, we'll call them out and they'll send somebody through. Typically, the Ford Road overpass and underpass, we'll have them hit that one or two extra times a year, depending on the amount of debris in the gutter line.
I appreciate the extra information. I will be in support, but, you know, I did receive some calls for people asking me not to support this. They have been servicing the city for about eight years. You know, in my neighborhood alone, a lot of people, they're sweeping up their streets in front of the house, they keep it clean, and when this thing comes through, they're dumping more dust. They're making a huge mess on the street after the residents are already cleaning it. And I've expressed those concerns at our budget meetings and elsewhere. You know, I understand we need to have this and the issue with the other contractor not being local, but I just wanted to express some of those concerns that they might not be emptying the vacuum as much as they should be. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Oh, Mr. Gabbell, I apologize.
Yeah, Doug, and the difference between the two companies wasn't that disparaging as far as the amount. I was just curious, because when I went on their website to look up SCA, they cite that they do Troy, Southfield, Farmington Hills, Bloomfield Hills, Livonia, and Rochester Hills here locally. So, I don't know where the disconnect is on what communities they service in southeastern Michigan, or how much business they have in Michigan, but their website at least indicated that they did business in all of those municipalities.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Certainly, Councilman, the references we received from the company, the closest one was Jackson in Michigan, Jackson County. The rest of the references were on the southwest corner of the state.
Okay.
So, we called those references, we would have certainly called references local if they would have gave those to us.
Okay. Thanks.
Good. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
New business, item two, approval of proposed land division at 6225 Arthur, west side of Arthur, between Yale and Hunter. This is planning department number 2260. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Some move. Some motion from Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported from Councilwoman Sampe. Mr. Ayew?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. So, we have three properties here that are zoned R5, single-family residential. One is developed by a single-family dwelling, the one over here to the north, this one over here. And the remaining two to the south are vacant. The petitioner, homeowner, Michael, in front of you, is requesting to combine all three of the parcels and then split them approximately where this red line is located to create two parcels. The resulting parcels, this is the survey in your packet, this is the survey showing parcel A and parcel B, the two surveys that are resulting, I'm sorry, the two parcels that are resulting from this will comply with all of the dimensional requirements for an R5 single-family residential lot. The Planning Commission held a public, well, a meeting and heard this case on August 2nd and is recommending approval. Michael Conrad, the resident is in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Perfect. How do, Mr. Conrad?
Good, how are you?
Is there anything else you want to tell us that Mo hasn't told us already?
It's pretty straightforward, I think.
All right. I'm going to open up the gallery and see if they got any questions. Any questions from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Anything from the council? Councilman Gabbell? Oh, I thought you hit the button. Councilman Hersberg?
Sure, I'll ask a question.
Sure thing.
Are you, you're the current homeowner in one of those lots?
Yes, of all three.
Do you want to build a house there or just expand the yard?
The yard, it's already elephantine, so it's a large garden. I was thinking about maybe splitting it, either building or selling off the parcel.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Councilman McDermott?
Just a real quick question. Do you have a timeline for building that you were looking to?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No. The current house is under remodel right now, so finish that first and then see.
From there, once it's finished? Got it. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion from the council? Well, I'll be supportive. I wish you luck no matter what you do, either a big green space or if you go ahead and put a house up there. We'd like both. So, last time, any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Good luck, sir. Thank you so much.
New business, item three, approval of site plan for proposed building addition and a new building, 1475 South Newburgh, east side of Newburgh, west of the railroad lane. This is planning department number 2261. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion from the Pro Tem? Supported from Councilman Hornbuckle. Mr. Ayew?
Thank you. We have a property here that's located on the east side of Newburgh, just south of Cherry Hill. This property is outlined in yellow and zoned I-2, industrial. The applicant, business owner slash property owner, is requesting site plan approval to construct a 4,000-square-foot addition in this space over here to be used for additional truck, indoor truck repair area. Right now, my understanding is that the truck repair, well, some of the truck repair is occurring outside, and this addition will allow it to occur inside. Additionally, there's a approximately 10,000-square-foot addition, or I'm sorry, a new building that's being proposed in this area, and that will be used for warehousing of retail sales operation that they also have. In addition to these two proposed buildings, all of the existing gravel areas, which make up a majority of the site, will be paved along with stormwater infrastructure in place. This is an existing truck repair business named Westland Truck Center. They also have a small retail operation where they buy and sell goods for the repair of trucks and trailers. All of the adjacent properties are zoned industrial and make up a variety of industrial businesses. The future land use designation master plan is also industrial. The site otherwise is remaining consistent as you see it in terms of access. There's sufficient room to accommodate the 19 off-street parking spaces that are required. There's 20 that are proposed. This is a site plan showing you kind of what I showed before. There's going to be some landscaping installed in this area over here along the north property line, and the building will be constructed using metal paneling and split face block. This is an elevation of it, of the warehouse and the addition. All the setbacks in height and all that bulk requirement stuff in the zoning ordinance is being complied with, and this is a street view. That's all I have. I have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's anything else you'd like to add? I assume you're the petitioner, so there you are. So, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, he nailed it pretty good.
I figured as much. He usually does a pretty good job. Anything from the maker?
No.
Anything from the supporter?
No.
All right. Any other discussion from the council? Councilman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you guys for the continued investment here in the city. Really appreciate it. Just a quick question, like I asked the last petitioner, do you guys have a timeline for when you're looking to construct and ultimately finish the expansion?
We're going to submit for the permit. Once we have that, probably it's going to happen from March onwards.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the continued investment in the city. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Is that Mr. Samara? Is I'm saying that right?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. So, thank you for the investment, too. So, just as reading or what Mo shared, all of your gravel areas are going to be paved. Is that what you're going to do first? Is the paving and then the build, or are you going to do the build and the paving?
We're going to do the building first.
The paving first?
No, building.
Oh, I'm sorry, the building first? Okay, and then the paving? Okay. And then, from a timeline perspective, you'll work through that and then?
Exactly.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I was just curious to see what's going to come first.
Well, I can appreciate wanting to work on trucks indoors as opposed to outdoors, so I can appreciate the need for that. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kathy Broadbent. I have been a Westland resident since 1988, and I am here for a couple things. One, I wanted to commend you on the play structure at Tatten Park. It's beautiful. My grandkids were there in July, and I don't have enough good things to say about it. It really is very inclusive and very nice. When we were there, July 24th, I went up to buy wristbands for the splash pad, and on the way up, I noticed a little boy playing in the pond, and a man looking like he was trying to get him out. And I was watching as I was going up, and my daughter was behind me, and I did not know she was behind me, my adult daughter, and I heard her say, "Mom, I'll be right back." And she went over there, and she asked a man if this was his son. He goes, "No." He said, "I saw him playing in here. I'm trying to get him out. He won't come out." And I understand there are signs up that say, "No swimming, no playing." This is a three- or four-year-old. He was autistic, nonverbal, and of course, he doesn't read. He's in this water, and my daughter, you know, got him out, went in, got him out with this man, and averted a tragedy that could have happened, and she walked him up to the, to where the wristbands are purchased, and she took a picture of him on the way up and sent it to her husband and say, "Go look around the play area and see which parent looks like they're about ready to have a stroke." And they did find the dad, who had a little baby with him, and he had lost track of his son. So, what my question is, is why don't we have that more secure there? There should be a fence all the way around, not just this little decorative fence in And I don't know who to address that question to.
Mayor, would you like to address that during your comments?
Sure.
Okay. The mayor will go ahead and answer that question during his comments.
And then, do I still have time left?
You have one minute left, ma'am.
Okay. So, the other thing is, same day, well, not same day, that was a Saturday. Monday, the 26th, I was leaving my subdivision Hawthorne Valley, Hayes School, and they were doing roadwork. And I apparently, only the people that lived where they were doing the work got notices, but no one can get in and out of that subdivision without going through those streets. And like, I had places to be, and it held me up, and, you know, I think that everyone in the subdivision should have gotten a notice, and it was a two-day project. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's right on my left. Yes, ma'am.
Lori Wilson, because you all know me, I really have two questions. I have to think of the second one, but the first one, I threw the chair to the mayor. The speed humps, school's going to start next week. When will, we have a meeting coming up, our homeowners, and I'd like to have something positive to report to them, so if you can tell me when that is going to occur, I would appreciate it. And also, the sidewalk replacement and the tree removal. We have a home, like I said before, on Julius. They redid one and put that seated netting down. It's going to turn into weeds if the homeowners don't watch it. But between Hanover and Dancy, there's a house that had the same But between Hanover and Dancy, there's a house that had the same thing done. This house is full of weeds. There's nothing but weeds in that front yard where they removed the tree and they removed the sidewalk. I'd like to see something done about that because that is bringing down that corner. That's it.
Ms. Wilson, can you send us the address when you get a minute to? Just so that we can forward that off? Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone on my right? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm Ms. McCormick, I live on El Gonquin. I've come before you three or four times now, um, informing you of the wrongful, if not criminal, behavior of Chris Sparza and Bryn Do Ring Minton from the Fire Department Ordinance. It doesn't seem to bother you that they are going out of their way to be discriminating, hateful, and malicious. They refuse to do their job. Spara has no credibility when he falsely criminally charged me that my clothesline was a fence and in violation of fence ordinances. He committed perjury by swearing my clothesline was in violation of these fence ordinances. While my neighbor's fence is dilapidated, broken post, boards off, falling down, he refuses to do anything about it. Why is he getting paid for not doing his job? All residents are your employers. I will be emailing all of you with the meeds violations of the dilapidated fence and growth 20 feet high which has grown onto my property. I will also be sending you a video of Spara humping, coming on my property, threatening me and saying, I quote, "I'm going to give you a hard time." I don't understand why his behavior is condoned and his wrongful conduct. He has, he is representing the city as being hateful, malicious, and discriminating. And I don't understand why nothing is being done about it. I can't get these violations taken care of. It doesn't matter what the neighbor meeds do, they can do whatever they want, and he's not going to do anything about it. Lastly, I would like to commend Mr. Godbout for bringing up the issue of how the city is paying for fixing everyone's sidewalks that are in disrepair. I personally do not want to pay for my neighbor's sidewalk. It, uh, condones neighbors not keeping their property up, and I feel that, uh, he asked the mayor a question about it, I feel that the mayor verbally attacked you. He, he accused you of grandstanding when the truth is, he's grandstanding by saying people will get their sidewalks fixed so they vote for him in the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my left? Yes, Ray.
This is going to be the fun and present today, why I tell you, today's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. And I want to show this off today. Is I was nominated and I've got a nice plaque. And for self-acquacy for 40 years, let me tell you from recapping from coming to city council 2005, I remember some of the challenging days. And, uh, so I'm going to read this too, and from the challenging and, and also being ambassador of the mental health, and I'm very passionate about that, I'm also on a few boards, I am very active now. We're talking about the good stuff, and I also did this year, have, you know, we did a Westland Disabilities Awareness Video, and I wanted to thank Melissa, and, um, that's always on going on there too, and I got a plaque from Westland before this year, so it's been a good year for me. So this one is 40 years of self-acquacy, from the memories of days how people, "Ah, we don't want these people in our neighborhood." You know what? We proved people wrong. People are in the community now, people are doing things. So, Ray Schuhos, I am, as a recognition of your outstanding impact as a self-advocate of your acquacy work has inspired other individuals in bringing their acquacy journey. The service celebrates your achievements and encourages you to make positive impact of the people in the world. I know I love this plaque, and I'm going to be hanging that up. And also a peer mentor, I've been a peer mentor now for 11 years. I also been a peer support before, a matter of fact, so I've been a CLS, you know, and that, that is my, uh, career. My career is being a self-advocate, and I love what I do. And always making changes, and I know the three minutes won't come up very far. Anyway, we are also at the farm market, we are, uh, somebody was at the barbecue thing, and we got pictures of this, we are involved, we don't sit around, we're always doing something. We have resources now that I'm giving out. I gave one out to the fire department, one today. I want to say thank you to the, to my friends that came to my birthday meeting, it was great, and even a hat like this, and I'm telling you, it was very nice, I even got a big, you know, cake that I go pick up yet. So, um, Ray is going to still continue doing what I am doing. I'm going to keep driving the wheel, keep going out there, keep talking to people, and I love this. This is, I'm very proud of this. So I, you know, community is, what I tell people, you can be a next generation.
All right, Ray, that's the three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience? Sure.
Thank you, Council President, Kevin Coleman, State Representative, District 25, uh, here in Westland. I usually like to come in at the beginning of the meetings, but I was, uh, had a couple obligations today, I, sorry, I'm a little late, I just wanted to say hello and check in with you. Uh, last time I spoke, I believe it was back at the beginning of July when we had that great news about our, our state budget, uh, getting the big appropriation for the two fire stations for Westland. Uh, I usually like to come with, uh, news, but it's been quiet in Lansing during our in-district work period. We've been, uh, back in district more so than in Lansing, I've been up a couple times the last couple of months, but we haven't had full session. We'll be going back to full session September 6th, so that's coming up soon. And my plan is, is just to keep the council and the administration updated on any legislation, anything coming down through committees or, uh, even on the senate side that might impact, have a local impact, so I just want to make sure that, um, keeping you updated. Uh, no brand-new news today, uh, but our office is continually, uh, assisting constituents and helping anybody out that needs it, so I just want to share our information again. If you need any assistance at all, our phone number is 517-373-2275. Our email address, kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And, uh, we do have our monthly coffee hours coming back with Commissioner Glenn Anderson, we're going to be starting those back up in September. Uh, that's always the second Monday of every month at Homestead Kitchen on Wayne Road, that's, that's in the same strip mall as Carlos Mexican Restaurant, so you just go down the strip mall a little further and you'll see Homestead Kitchen there. We provide the coffee and we provide a legislative update and answer any questions you may have. Uh, and that's going to be on the 11th. And then lastly, I just want to say, great job, I know it, it takes a lot of teamwork from the city, from volunteers and different community groups. Anybody involved with Blues Brews and Barbecue, I was able to go and enjoy the event myself and with some friends and, uh, had a great time. So, uh, just appreciate all the hard work that was put in to make that event a success. Have a great meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close with a comment, move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart, good evening, everyone. Um, for the folks that came up tonight with some issues, uh, with Tatten Park, blight issues, um, and the questions that Laurie Wilson had, if you guys can contact my office at 734-467-3200 or email us, mayor@cityofwestland.com. Happy to talk to you or happy to sit down with you to, to talk at length about those issues, so. City Attorney may have, uh, some information on neighborhood blight as well, we talked earlier today, we have a few outstanding issues that are out there, so maybe he can opine on that as well. Uh, at the last meeting, we had a couple questions from a resident that asked about, she asked two specific questions, one was revenue made off recycling revenue share. The revenue share received for the 2022-2023 fiscal year was approximately $30,000. She also asked about the contamination rate. The contamination rate is approximately 15%. This was calculated based on the contamination fee as a percent of the total contract cost of the, for the year, which is based on the tonnage process. Uh, I plan to email her on that as well, I'll copy Councilwoman Rakowski and the entire council, uh, I know she reached out to you directly as well, so. Thank you, council, for moving forward with the reappointment of Ken Sharp to the Westland Planning Commission. As I stated when the item came up, he's our longtime planning commissioner, uh, 28 years on, on the board, and he's the chairman, and he's actually a retired firefighter here in our community, so we appreciate him. Also want to take a moment to extend my sincere gratitude for the invitation from John and Lindsay, uh, they invited me to the 32nd Annual Gary Avenue Block Party last Saturday. Uh, it was really a memorable event that brought our, our community together in such a warm and festive atmosphere. Um, I love events like this, it reminds us of the beauty of a close-knit community and the joy of spending time with our neighbors. Um, I greatly appreciate the time, the energy and the effort that went into dedicating to making this block party a success. I mean, the entire block, everyone was involved, I mean, there were hundreds of people out there, so I had a great time. The City of Westland is partnering with the Wayne County, and they will hold the annual Household Hazardous Waste Day on Saturday, August 26th, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Westland Shopping Center, which is located at 35000 Warren Road. This free event is open to Wayne County residents. To obtain a detailed list of what is, what is and is not accepted, please visit cityofwestland.com. Uh, we also have some of these flyers in the audience, or, not in the audience, excuse me, out in the lobby for members of the audience that wish to, uh, see some of the items. Uh, participants should be prepared for long lines as this is a high-volume event, so I'm just warning you ahead of time. I'm going to give the council and the residents an update on the Central City Park Pond. We're calling it the Central City Park Revival Project. The city has been working since February of 2023 to transform the gated-off Central City Park area into a beautiful walking trail. The Central City Park Pond walking, walkway is being reopened for the health and safety of Westland residents. Bringing this deserted natural landscape back to life and turning it over to residents was a top priority when I became mayor. The project has included the removal of dead and damaged trees, removal of the tall black cyclone fencing that was up for 17 years, clearing of all the overgrown brush and vegetation, construction of a brand-new asphalt walking trail around the pond, installation of signage, installation of soil embankment and hotspots to remediate environmentally contaminated areas, and new stormwater infrastructure to alleviate flooding issues. The asphalt walk will be eight feet wide and 1,000 feet long. The city has had its consultants take 89 lead soil samples in the area so as to design a safe walkway. To avoid exposure to residents, the city has installed an asphalt path, as I talked about, and brought in 2,500 yards of clean fill. We planted grass over the area and have plans to add additional landscaping to eliminate any unnecessary exposure risk. The path also has standards to stay on the path and to not enter the pond. The city has confirmed with its environmental consultants that walkers will, will, no acceptable risks. This walking path will be a great addition to the existing quarter, or, excuse me, half-mile or 264, 200, 2,640-foot walking path around the soccer fields at Central City Park, which is enjoyed by many residents, weather permitting. Um, this trail and restoration plan has helped the city reimagine an underutilized area that will quickly become a celebrated community asset once it's open later this year. Uh, we'll have a lot more news on that soon and when we can, uh, bring everybody out to see it. I want to touch on some road projects, I know I did a, a big update a few council meetings ago, but there's some misinformation out there about, uh, current road projects, who's, who's responsible for them, um, and the timeline on them, so. Uh, there are many road, road projects happening around the city right now, uh, some are Wayne County projects and some are city projects, which I'll highlight. The following are Wayne County road projects. Wayne Road from Cherry Hill to Palmer, this is a county road project, the contractor is in the process of placing the final layer of asphalt. This project was scheduled to be completed in October 2023, however, they are ahead of schedule and work should be substantially complete and reopen to traffic in early September. Merriman Road Bridge Project, I know we can't, all wait for that to be done, that's in progress, however, we just found out recently, the contractor ran into some major issues with existing utilities at the Merriman Road, Merriman Road Bridge over Middle Rouge Bridge, uh, and engineers are redesigning the sheet piling plans for the revised bridge foundations. Uh, the Merriman over Heinz Bridge is progressing as scheduled. Original completion date is November 15th, but this could be delayed due to this new information. Last week, we asked the county for a revised schedule, and as soon as we receive it, we'll let you all know. Last county road, excuse me, there's two county roads here, Wayne Road over the Tonkis Creek Bridge, that one's been a nightmare for a few of our council members that drive that way. Uh, the, design is completed and contractor is almost done with relocating the new utilities. The original start date was November 23rd, however, with the, uh, closing Wayne Road and project start will not take place until the Merriman Road Bridge is complete and reopen to traffic. Last two county road projects, Merriman Road Resurfacing between Michigan Ave. and the Rouge River Bridge is completed, and the Middle Belt Resurfacing between Warren and Anheuser Trail is completed. The following are city-approved capital improvement fund, uh, fund projects. Marquette Resurfacing between Herbert and Carlson has been completed. South John Hicks Resurfacing between Palmer and Glenwood has been completed. The Palmer Resurfacing between Hamilton and Schuman and John Hicks to Hannan has also been completed. District 23, 30, 17, 21, 41, and 43 deficient concrete removal and replacement and asphalt resurfacing has been completed. Pavement joint and crack ceiling project has been completed. Cowen Road, Cowen Road, excuse me, water main replacement asphalt resurfacing is ongoing right now. District 3 deficient concrete removal and replacement is also ongoing, and then sanitary, sanitary sewer lining projects are ongoing as well. Last few things here. As we eagerly prepare for the upcoming school year and welcome back our teachers and students, uh, the safety and well-being of our school community remains a top priority, so make sure you're looking out for schools' own signals and always, always watch your speed limits, uh, and abide by them. Be cautious of children near, near schools, bus stops, sidewalks while waiting to go to school. It's important to slow down around schools and watch out for children going to and from school. Uh, we hope you guys all have a safe and enjoyable school year. Great news to report, uh, in regards to recruitment and retention of both our police and firefighters. We had a total of nine entry-level police officer applicants that were interviewed by the Police and Fire Commission and six entry-level firefighters that were also interviewed. Um, they have all made it through the testing and interview portion, and they move on in the background phase of the process, so I also met with Chief Dollar this afternoon, he mentioned that, uh, the academy ends in November and our recruitment team continues to recruit talented individuals and new officers. Lastly, I just want to take a second to thank the residents for their support during the, the primary election. Um, the trust and support I've received from the citizens of Westland inspires me to work harder and harder to serve our community. Uh, I want to thank you all for believing in me, I'm excited for an opportunity to continue to lead Westland into a new era of growth and prosperity. And I also want to take, extend my heartfelt appreciation to all the dedicated individuals who ran as candidates in the primary election. Your commitment to our community and democratic process is commendable. Let's continue working together for a brighter future for our city, and I thank you all for your efforts and passion, and of course, I got to thank the clerk's office and our election workers as well, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Fasson?
I'll just touch on, um, issue that the mayor kind of tossed my way on blight, uh, and I, and I want to make a distinction between neighbor and neighbor disputes and blight, uh, issues. Uh, unfortunately, the toughest things we deal with in the city, I think this is true for Neighborhood Services, certainly by the time it gets a, a ticket written and makes its way to the city attorney's, uh, office. Neighbor-to-neighbor disputes often have a lot more emotion wrapped into them than just the, uh, underlying issue that, uh, maybe you could write a ticket on, so, uh, we're, we're aware of those, um, interpersonal dynamics that often, uh, accompany neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. In the commercial blight area, um, uh, we have been moving on, and you may recall that, uh, properties such as Leroy's Restaurant, uh, was taken down and, and Nankin Tavern has been taken down this year. We often work with the owner and try to get them to voluntarily undertake that demolition work. Uh, along the way, if they've, uh, ignored tickets, uh, or haven't allowed proper access so that we can totally evaluate whether demolition's necessary, uh, we have obtained at the city attorney's office with the cooperation of Neighborhood Services and sometimes the Fire Department, we go in and get, uh, a court order to administrate a search warrant, we go in, provide the information to the court, court issues a search warrant which will, then allows the city to enter the property, go into the building, take the photos, and then we're in a position with the evidence that we need to move forward on a condemnation, uh, process and seek a court order for either the individual owner or the city to, um, uh, knock down the building, for example. Uh, but there has to be due process in that situation, so that's why we're in court, both for initially the administrative search warrant, but then subsequently having to file, uh, for an order to either have the owner act or the city will act, and the costs of doing that will be placed on the property as a lien, uh, so that the city can, uh, recoup its costs. As I said, there were two examples there of where, uh, once you start the process and demonstrate, uh, we're going through with this and indeed, look at these photos, don't tell me this building can be rehabbed, um, you get a lot of voluntary cooperation. Does not always Does not always occur that way. We have one currently that we just got the order that gave the owner 30 days to fix it up. I'm sorry, not fix it up, 30 days to knock it down. That's the fix-up here, or the city can do it. So it's not always a voluntary process, and when it's not a voluntary process, it even takes longer to make sure that in these kind of blight condemnation matters, that there's a proper, appropriate due process and that the city's costs are covered should it have to actually do the work that the owner of the property refuses to do. So there's a lot of stuff going on. Doesn't happen in front of the city council. It happens in court, following the court rules and due process, but I think the mayor wanted me to speak about the fact that this is going on, although we don't talk about it every week or every month. That's, that's all I had.
Pardon me. Got a tickle in my throat. Councilman Hersberg?
Thanks, Council President. I'll be real quick tonight. I just want to wish Ray a happy birthday. Thanks for all your service in the community. Thanks for all your hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed, and 40 years is a long time to, to be doing that. You've made a lot of progress in all those decades, so happy birthday. I want to congratulate Ken Sharp on his reappointment of the Planning Commission. 28 years of service really says a lot. I know he was a public servant before that even, so thank you for your continued service to the City of Westland. Lastly, I just want to thank Councilman Godbout. We have a letter here with three, from three council members to the council president requesting six study sessions on items that have been ignored and neglected over the last two years. That includes, I'll just name a couple. The Citizen Oversight Board, Responsible Contracting, the Marijuana Ordinance, we, we'll talk about that later. We talked about our local compensation for elected officials and the tie bar and how that works. American Rescue Plan update, and there's a couple more here I'm sure they'll talk about, so I just, I just want to thank you, Councilman Godbout, for your leadership on this council. It's a real shame that we have to get three of us together to get this stuff moving, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well, enjoying your summer. I got back in the wee hours of the morning on a well-needed family vacation, and I can't believe summer's pretty much done. I wanted to also congratulate Ken Sharp on, on your reappointment. As Councilman said, it's great to see that we just have people recommitting in the city. And Ray, thank you for including me in your birthday celebration over at DQ. It was very nice. We got some photos. While we were over there, we were talking about all the great things that the Diversity Committee, I'm sorry, the Disabilities Advocacy Committee was doing, and they've done a lot. So they were at Blues Brews and Barbecue. I spoke with C. Pascal Azay, our director, and he just said he has gotten so much support from the administration that he just feels very lucky that administration is embracing and just wanting to include everyone, no matter where you live or what challenges you have. So I wanted to thank the committee for, for being at Blues Brews. They had a reduced noise zone for sensitive groups. They gave out headphones, and they also gave out some earbuds, too. So that was just at the event, but also at the fireworks as well. And then they've been at Wesleyan Farmer's Market, and they've been out in the community. So I, I think it's that you guys are doing great things in the community. I just wanted to congratulate you again, and it just goes without saying that, that award is, is well-deserved, so thank you. Thank you so much, Ray. I wanted to thank the clerk, Richard LeBlanc, and Deputy Clerk Shannon Emmon for all of your hard work on the election, also the workers that worked on August 8th. I think it's, it's a thankless job because it's very long days, but I think that it's, for you guys, it's just, it's like the wheels keep on turning, right? It's, it always goes off with a hitch. I know we narrowed it down to two mayoral candidates, so Mayor Londo and State Rep. Kevin Coleman. It was a tight race. Mayor finished in the top spot. We have Kevin Coleman. So we are actually moving into now, November 7th is the election, so that's coming up, and that's, residents have been calling and asking me, like, when's the election? When's the reelection? So that's when the election is, and then you'll, you'll see the council members on there as well, too. So there's a lot of confusion, I think, with primaries, like, people thought that you'd see council on there, too, so just to kind of clarify that there is another election coming. But if you have any questions, feel free to reach out and, and ask me. I've been out in neighborhoods walking and talking with residents. So just to share some, some distribution for gleaners, I had someone reach out to me on Thursday, August 24th, at Adams Middle School. There is a gleaners distribution, so it's open from 12 to 2, and there's 30 pounds of groceries, so you can pick up for another household, but gleaners is having their distribution event. And then the farmer's market is also on Thursday, so we're going to be out at the Central City Park, and I know they've been really well-attended, a lot of local vendors with crafts and such, too, so that's happening, just a reminder, from 3 to 7. Again, the farmer's market on Thursday. And then I wanted to bring up to an update, so I think it was not last meeting, but the meeting before, I had mentioned about that slide at Mission to Mars. So that slide, those little babies were going down so fast and scraping their little bottoms up, so I emailed Devon Adams, our controller, and he's working with Kyle on some pricing. So what I had asked is, can we put another row, which actually stops them from hitting the cement? So we're working on some pricing. I think it's, it's well-needed because there's, there's two rows, and then it's cement, so they're just stopping on the cement, and they're scraping up their legs and their little bottoms, so we're working on that. Tonight on the consent calendar, I just wanted to applaud Joanne Campbell for bringing this forward on our consent calendar. It's good to see that we're going to have a real, a wheelchair-accessible picnic table, so that made me smile when I saw that, as we're moving, just being inclusive. And then also to plug, on Thursday, the 24th through August 26th, Fill the Boot Event, so I wanted to thank our firefighters for being out in Wayne Road and Ford Road, so I think they're out there all day, if I'm not mistaken, so that's going to take place this week, so if you see them out, Wayne Road and Ford Road, please feel free to fill that boot with some change that you have in your pocket. I know Mayor covered this, but just sending well wishes to all those parents. You might have a young one that you're sending back to school, maybe you're sad. I'm sending my junior in high school back to school, and I'm happy because he's been bugging me all summer. But again, I encourage everyone just to be safe, follow those posted speed limits, avoid destructive driving. If you're sending your child to school with, with a bike, wear their helmet as well, too. So our next meeting will be on Tuesday, so September 5th on Tuesday, so because of the Labor Day holiday, we're having our next meeting Tuesday, September 5th at 7:00. Again, we welcome residents. If you have any questions, ever want to reach out to me, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe on Facebook, you can reach out to my personal cell phone at 734-637-2078. Until then, be safe and kind to each other. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. As Councilman Hersberg mentioned, I did, along with Councilman Hersberg and Councilman McDermott, request six study sessions to be scheduled within the next 30 days. Some of these, we've been asking to have study sessions on for in excess of a year, and it's unfortunate that we have to go through the formal procedure before we can get any action taken on some of these topics. I was a little taken aback just a few minutes ago when the mayor talked about the pond project at Central City Park, saying that he initiated it back in February. In fact, I had been working on that project with former Mayor Wild for almost two years. We've had multiple meetings during that time with SME, OHM Advisors, Eagle, the city attorney's been involved with it. So to make the spin that this is his brainchild and project that he just implemented starting in February is, is, it's a great spin, but in reality, there's been a lot of work that's been done, a lot of background work that's been done over the past couple of years prior to him becoming the interim mayor, so just thought I'd set the record straight on that. And along those lines, as the one resident mentioned, the sidewalk program, the city attorney issued a six-page opinion indicating that because the charter used permissive terms, the city has discretion in not charging for the cost of the sidewalk repairs. I'm not really surprised. This follows along the lines of a verbal opinion I asked the city attorney back in January on how Council President Hart's son could be hired by the city when the charter clearly has an anti-nepotism section that should have prevented it. You know, as elected officials, we take an oath of office that we will uphold the charter and ordinances of the City of Westland, not find loopholes to fit our own agenda. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Hornbuckle? How about follow-up on that? I guess, hope it's a better good to see. Give everybody back into the spirit after Ray's talk.
All I would really leave an update on the Westland Bear and Wine Festival, September 16th. Right now, before next week, Wednesday is a good time to get your tickets if you're expecting to go into the event. It's $30, it's $35, so you want to get the tickets, see your ticket requests out before next week, Wednesday. But the main thing I want to highlight is all the back-to-school programs that's happening around the city. I want to give kudos to Jefferson Barnes for their back-to-schools and riding backpacks. The Wayne Westland School Fair, you know, great turnout, a lot of kids, look like a lot of kids ready to go back to school, and then the Shoppin' Plaza in Middleville and Annapolis. This is very important to me because I remember back when I went to school, there were a couple of times where I didn't have a book bag, book bag or anything that goes to start school, but eventually got it. So if there's anyone out there that little one didn't get a book bag or still need a book bag, reach out to me, dhornbuckle@cityofwestland.com, or call or text me at 734-224-2747, and together we can find a way to get your little one a backpack and school supplies. That's really all I have, and thank you all for coming, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Good evening, and thank you, Council President. First, I want to start out by wishing Ray happy birthday. Happy birthday, Ray, and thank you for all you do. That, that honorary that you got, that the plaque that you got is well-deserved, as always. Hope you hang it up high at your house and look at it often because you deserve it, and you've really done a lot to help advance issues around people who are differently abled and disabled in our community and really all across Southeast Michigan, so well-earned, well-deserved, and happy birthday to Ray. We appreciate all that you do each and every day, each and every week here in Westland and across Southeast Michigan. Want to make mention of the crossing guard program. The Westland Police are hiring for our crossing guard program. You can go to cityofwestland.com if you are interested in being a crossing guard in this school year. They need lots of people to do it. There's a shortage, just like there are for bus drivers and lots of things in our schools for crossing guards, so, you know, they would greatly appreciate the school district, kids, Police Department, your help, your support, making sure that kids get to school safely. Go to cityofwestland.com. You can fill out the form online to sign up and be a crossing guard for the Wayne Westland School System. Want to thank all the people formerly who helped organize Blues Brews and Barbecue, our Downtown Development Authority, and all the work that they do each year putting that event together. It is no small feat to get that event organized each and every year. I want to thank our Parks and Rec Director, Kyle Mulligan, and his entire team, Park Rangers, who are working like busy beavers there each day at Blues Brews and Barbecue and working hard to keep it clean. Just because somebody sits, gets up from their table doesn't mean they take their plate and things with them, and oftentimes they leave a big mess of barbecue and beer at the table, so oftentimes it's the Park Rangers who are going around with volunteers there cleaning up the tables, so thank you, Kyle, and your entire Park Ranger team for helping out at the event. Thank you for our DPS crew for going there, setting up, and breaking down afterwards. All the tents that you see up there, all the chairs and tables that you see all around for the concerts, for the food vendors, our DPS crews going there beforehand and coming there afterwards. Coming in early, staying late, working hard to get all those tables and chairs and tents set up to make Blues Brews and Barbecue possible. And of course, thank you to all the community groups that volunteer. We have so many individuals who are part of so many great community groups that give their time and work tirelessly. I'm really sorry that some of you didn't have a overwhelmingly positive experience this year, thanks to a couple of individuals coordinating that. We hope that that will be changed and rectified for next year, but thank you for giving your hours of community service. You don't get paid, you know, necessarily to do this individually. We know that your organizations get a little money from this, but you are certainly volunteering your time, and we really thank you for that. And thank you to everybody who came out here in the City of Westland and across Metro Detroit to make it such a great event and have incredible turnout at Blues Brews and Barbecue. As my colleague already mentioned, Councilman Hornbuckle, thank you to Joanne Campbell and the Norway Community Citizens Council on their great backpack drive event. I was not able to go. I was on a family camping trip, but thank you to everybody in the Norway Community Citizens Council and Joanne Campbell who made the back-to-school event such a huge success. I want to thank Ken Sharp on his years of service and his continued service, and the mayor for nominating him again, and for the council for approving Ken to continue to serve on our Planning Department. I want to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department on their charity softball game. Again, I was out of the area, so was not able to go, but it sounds like it was another huge success and a big win this year for fire, getting police back after their win last year. And then I want to thank the Clerk's Office, Clerk LeBlanc. He's smiling at me because he knows I have a lot to say here, but I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet, almost. I got two more things. I want to thank your office, Clerk LeBlanc, Deputy Clerk Emmon, and everybody that gives their time on Election Day to help run a free fair and smooth election. When you have to get up at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning to, to get ready and to come into work a precinct, and the Clerk's Office who gets this work prepped year-round, thank you for all the work that you do. It was another well-run election. Thank you to all the candidates who stepped up to, to run, but thank you to everybody who volunteered to work one of the polling locations. Without your help and your support and your time and effort given, we would not be able to sustain our democracy and have these free and fair elections because you all, whether you're on the absentee counterboard or you're working at a poll, are the reason that we're able to do this, election in and election out, so thank you to the Clerk's Office. Last but not least, boy, get to talk about our old friend DTE. How about that? Seems like we're up here, meeting after meeting, dunking on DTE, and it's well-deserved on their part. It's well-deserved for the 30-plus years of neglect that they've done to our power grid. You know, I've sat up here, meeting after meeting, and several, many of my colleagues have as well, reading you off all the statistics, how we're 46th in the nation in grid reliability according to the Michigan Citizens Utility Board, how we're 14th highest in terms of the cost that we as consumers pay, and how we have one of the slowest turnaround times thanks to DTE's years of neglect on the grid. But it's one thing for an elected official in a position such as this to complain, it's another thing to bring some real solutions and some real action items to the table. And I think that that's something that not only all of us, but every elected official in every seat across Metro Detroit and in Lansing needs to do. And there's some things here, not going to bore you with a, an essay on what we need to do. I did put that on my council page, which you can view at Councilman Mike McDermott, but just to give you kind of a thousand-foot quick view of what we can do, there's short-term, mid-range, and long-term solutions that we need to have when it comes to DTE. Short-term being things we can do in the next six months to a year. That being, we need a piece of legislation that empowers the Michigan Public Service Commission to demand higher bill credits for all of us as consumers when we lose power. It should be an industry standard, when I talk to Amy Vannick and Doug Jester at the Michigan Citizens Utility Board, between $2 to $5 for every hour you're out of power. Not every hour, starting at 90 hours, and not the lousy and insulting $35 bill credit that DTE gives you. When you're throwing out hundreds of dollars worth of groceries, when you have to go stay at a hotel, when you have a disability that requires medical equipment to be powered up, or you have medication that requires to be refrigerated, $35 is a slap in the face, and DTE knows it. Well, their CEO, Jerry Norcia, makes 12 and 1/2 million in compensation, they're offering you 35 bucks. That's insulting. It should be 2 to 5 bucks for every hour that you're out of power, starting at Hour 1, not Hour 90 or Hour 48 like DTE tries to do. Second, we need to empower the Public Service Commission to hold DTE to account so that when DTE goes asking for rate hikes on all of us as consumers, small businesses, that the public... the Public Service Commission has a street-by-street detail of the trees that got trimmed, the power lines that got buried, the substations and the transformers that got changed out. See, one of the problems in an older community like Westland is we have a lot of above-ground power lines, which the trees fall on, which we can't blame DTE for trees growing or for Mother Nature and the wind, but we can blame them for not going around and doing the necessary tree trimming that they say that they're going to do, that they talk about in their TV ads and their billboards and their radio ads. And one of the problems with that is when power lines go down, it's oftentimes our fire department that has to sit there and play babysitter for hours at a time because they can't send people out immediately after a storm to make sure that, you know, nobody gets hurt or touched by a downed power line. It's another reason why, you know, Councilwoman Sampie's idea of a CERT program would be, I think, a huge asset for our community. Then there's the long-term, the mid-range and long-term solutions, the things that we can do in the next three to five years, and the long-term stuff that is kind of five years, 10 years, and out. Those are things like changing the Foot Act of 1905 around utility franchising fees and the utility franchising that DTE has. There's a long explanation for what the Foot Act is and what it does. I'm not going to go into that, but it needs to be changed. And we need to have a look, and I think this is the biggest and best long-term solution that we have, into publicly-owned utilities. If you're not familiar with it, your water system here is operated by the Great Lakes Water Authority. That is a publicly-owned utility. It is not a for-profit, private, shareholder-driven entity. DTE is not a publicly-owned utility. They are a privately, a publicly-traded company, but a private industry. And so, DTE is more concerned, more concerned with their bottom line and pleasing their Wall Street shareholders and paying out bigger dividends than they are putting in a reliable grid. Now, that may not seem like the case when you see their slick ads on TV talking about record investment in the grid. But what I would implore you all to do is to take a look at their Wall Street shareholder transcript, because there's what they're telling you, John and Jane Q. Public, and there's what they're telling their Wall Street shareholders. And when you read their 2022 Quarter 4 transcript, they're talking about deferred maintenance, they're talking about delayed hiring, they're talking about reducing their contractor workforce, and that is bottom-line driven. That is so that they can meet their numbers for their Wall Street shareholders on their stock price, and they can pay out a bigger dividend. Now, when you look at Great Lakes Water Authority as a publicly-held entity, as a publicly-controlled entity by we the people, they are not perfect by any means, and I'm not going to sit here, nor should any elected official, and promise you that there is a magic fix to this situation because there isn't one. However, when you look at the reliability of your water grid, right, of the water and sewer systems that you have running into your home, running into businesses, versus the reliability of DTE, there is a huge delta between Great Lakes Water Authority as a public entity and DTE as a private, for-profit entity. And we need to look at doing what cities all around the state and all around the country already have, and that is having a publicly-owned utility by we the people. City of Windott has their own publicly-owned utility. Lansing has their own Board of Light and Power. Traverse City has their own publicly-owned utility, and so do hundreds of municipalities across the country. We have given DTE 30 years to fix their grid, to fix substations, transformers, trim more trees, bury more miles of power line, and we get excuses from them. And we get what they tell us publicly and what they tell their Wall Street shareholders. And enough is enough, and it is time that I think all of us in every community across Metro Detroit do something and stand up about it, and it's time that our leaders in Lansing do something to hold DTE to account. Because when I'm out there talking, knocking on doors, and I know when many of my colleagues are, too, we experience power outages just like you. We hear from business owners, we hear from residents about the continued problem and the failures of DTE to make our grid more reliable. And I know that it seems like DTE is a cheap and easy political punching bag, but they do it to themselves with the shape that they've left our grid in. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Start the timer. No, I'm kidding. I want to start off by also wishing Ray a happy birthday, and I know that I personally enjoy seeing you each week, spreading your messages of positivity. So, thank you for sharing all of that with us. I want to thank Ken Sharp for his continued dedication to our city. It's been said by all of my colleagues about his longstanding commitment to the planning board of 28 years. He's a retired firefighter, so can probably add at least 20 years to that. But I also want to extend gratitude to his wife, Carol, who is also very active in the community and runs a nonprofit that takes care of underprivileged new mothers in her Warm Hearts Program. So, she's a very kind and compassionate woman, and, you know, when you hear about things like, everybody's phone went off this morning, right, with the Amber Alert for the little 14-day-old twins, and you kind of think about some of the other dialogue that went around that with the woman requesting diapers, and obviously, she was living in a hotel. So, you know, without people like Carol who goes out and provide those things for underprivileged children and women, it would be great if we could find more of those humans so that we don't have to worry about children being kidnapped. But thankfully, they're safe, so that's wonderful. Like, my colleagues like to thank the clerk for an efficient election event. With the new state laws circling the election, I know that they had their work cut out for them. So, everyone, from the clerk to the deputy clerk, clerk office officials, and election workers, I just want to extend my gratitude for your hard work and dedication. It's a long day, but it's necessary, and we appreciate you for that. The firefighters, like Councilwoman Sampie said, are going to be at Ford Road and Wayne Road with their Fill the Boot program for MDA. And if you remember, we used to have telethons that helped generate funds. Jerry would be out there raising money. But the telethons have kind of gone the way of the dinosaur, and firefighters have been the number-one source of funding for MDA or muscular dystrophy research pretty much since the beginning of the muscular dystrophy research. So, if you have an opportunity to drop some change in the bucket or the boot, they'll be there on the 24th, 25th, and 26th. So, keep an eye out for them, and, you know, let's try to eradicate not only the disease, but provide opportunities for the children to be able to attend camps with, like, children and have a glimpse of some activities that they otherwise wouldn't be able to have access to because of their ailments. You know, it is back-to-school time. Councilman McDermott made mention of the crossing guards, and I just wanted to ask the administration, and I don't need a response today, but I'd like to kind of get an update on the crosswalk rehab situations for the schools so that the children do have, you know, safer walk and ride, if they're riding their bikes, to schools. You know, we're living in a society where people are too busy. They're too worried about what's on their phone, so hopefully, the hands-free driving laws will stymie some of that preoccupied driving. But, you know, we are a village. We need to watch out for our children, our children, even though they might know the rules of the road. They're children, right? So, as adults, we have to be a little bit more aware and provide them with safe passage to school. And the ESCOT program, so that's the Emanuel Stewart Champions of Tomorrow program, had a wonderful summer program camp. It was a free camp, and they don't just stop in the summer. They go all year. So, if you're interested in having your child learn about community character, athletics, and achievement, they are part of the Krunk Gym System at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, and it's a really great opportunity for children to learn about all of those things and, you know, have the luxury of having the stewardship of some really excellent coaches in boxing. And that is really the extent of what I want to share. Oh, no, there's one more thing. September 5th, I know, I'm sorry, Lori, but this is important. September 5th, when our next meeting is, prior to that meeting, is a study session scheduled for an update on our American Rescue Plan from your subcommittee. So, I would encourage and implore each of your citizens to come and attend that study session so you can get an update of what the subcommittee is putting forward as our recommendation, based off the previous recommendations of our colleagues. Took a little bit of time. We wanted to make sure all of the directors and other parties that are involved in this are available, and we wanted to make sure that we had accurate, what does it work, funds? Accurate estimations and estimates of the funds so that it can be, you know, a good document, right? We can make up things, but that's not going to do us any good. So, we wanted to have accurate amounts. So, that would probably be an early study session, you know, bring a lunch or bring your dinner with you, because I imagine it'll be long as well. But it's overdue, and it's time to do it, and we have the time to do it. So, I see you all on September 5th. I hope you have a wonderful Labor Day. Thank you to everyone who works hard to make our country as strong and wonderful as it is, and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Thank you to Councilman McDermott for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Ray, again, happy birthday. Thank you again to Ken Sharp and your years of dedication, your continued service to our city. And Clerk, thanks again for outstanding work. You had a lot of last-minute changes, all the new laws, and I think you still almost beat your record for getting everything done in time. So, I was pretty impressed. So, good job, Mr. Clerk, and thank you all for coming out. Is there a motion to adjourn?